Okay, let us begin. Yeah, so Scott or Steve, you have to take notes for the warrant committee?
Minutes.
Minutes. Okay, and I'm doing it for the school side.
Is that recording?
Yep. Yes, that's it is. So we were introducing ourselves before we tried to fix the technical issues. So we get all the way to Lizzie. So Lizzie, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, hi, I'm Lizzie Carroll on the school committee. This is my first year on school committee, doing this budget cycle. Nice to see you guys.
James Jet, Superintendent Milton Public Schools.
Oh, I'm Erin Bradley. I'm the secretary of the warrant committee. I am not on the subcommittee. I'm here just as an observer and somebody who has sat on the school committee, subcommittees in years past.
Beverly, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hello, this is Beverly Ross Denny. I am a member of the school committee.
You already did.
Your audio is really low.
Can't hear you, Viv. Is this better? Yes. This is Beverly Ross Denny. I'm a member of the school committee. I just was elected last April, so this is my first term on the finance committee.
Ada?
Ada Rose Maron. I am vice chair of the school committee, and this is my fifth year on school committee. I am happy to be here.
Steve, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. I'm Steve Geister. I've been a resident for almost 26 years in Milton, and I'm new to the warrant committee. I started in August of this past year, so I'm just learning my way around. Nice to meet everybody.
And Scott?
Scott from warrant committee. So are there just two of us, Steve, on this call? That's it? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, let's call the meeting to order. It is 5:54. So I'm going to let Amy begin the discussion so that she can answer some of the questions that we received. Okay.
Do you want me to just dive into the questions? Or how would the warrant committee subcommittee, like, need to address the questions? Do you want me to just down the list, or do you want to?
I have a question. These people that keep joining, these are not people that are in the meeting. They're observing the meeting, right? These new ones, okay. So just want to make sure I don't have to pick all these names down.
No, no.
No, only more. Oh, Scott, just the warrant committee members and the school committee members, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Why don't we go through the budget questions?
Let's focus on the budget questions initially, and then we can talk about other questions after that.
Okay.
So for anybody watching or listening, the school committee did present the budget request to the warrant committee maybe three or four weeks ago. And this meeting is a follow-up to with the warrant committee finding the subcommittee to the school committee, or to the school budget. And we received some questions in advance regarding the school budget. And I guess we're going to just dive into those questions and try to answer them.
Yes.
The warrant committee members. So the first, the first question was in general, can we please get a three to five-year spend multiple times? I wasn't sure if that was referring to an operating five-year forecast or if it was related to the capital, which was Karen Paval, to the capital improvement planning committee. I do have copies of the capital plan. If the warrant committee does not have it, I would think that she would have forwarded it to you. If you're referring to an operating five-year forecast, we don't have one at this time.
So I had heard somewhere last year, I don't know if it was one of the school committee meetings I was listening on, or a town meeting, but Denny promised that there would be a budget out by late spring last year, or an operating budget out late, late spring last year. And I haven't seen that unless I missed it. And he was working on one for the school, or with the school board, and with the town administrators, and also one for the town. And I haven't seen either of those. I don't know, maybe you know more, Scott?
So we not receive a request from the town administrator's office to put that together?
We submitted our budget to the town.
Right, so. He's no longer here to speak to that. The next question was what are the top five schools that our graduates are going to? Superintendent Jet, would you like to take that one?
Sure, I have no problem answering that. And I will say our students have been accepted and attended all of the Ivy League schools over the course of the years. In addition to the Ivy League schools, your BCS, your Providence, your UCLA's, your USC's, every year we post, and we have in the past posted in the Milton Times, the schools in which the students have been accepted to. However, that varies from year to year because it's all based on student interest, and it's also based on finances. To give you an example, I know a few years ago, we had students get accepted to Ivy League schools, but one student got a full ride to Temple and decided to go to Temple versus Ivy League school. So it varies. So I would say that in Milton Public School, graduates are very competitive. And I mean, are pretty much up there in terms of number of schools. And then if you go back about four, four years ago, five years ago, we had six students getting accepted, get, get accepted into Ivy League schools, from Brown to Dartmouth, to Harvard, to Cornell and Princeton in that same year. But again, that varies on the cohort that's coming through, and their interest. And it also boils down to the finances and the financial packages that they may get.
Good, good. For the next question?
So the next question is what schools do we kind of compare ourselves to? I believe that was in the budget book. But sometimes it's like the Brooklines, the Sherrons, the Cantons, the Eastons, the Westwoods, you know, those are the schools that we try to compare ourselves to. And sometimes that's ourselves, and sometimes it's also the community.
So that can be found on page six of the budget presentation that's in the school budget book? Well, a list of the school that gives the per-people cost. Then the next question is how does Essar, ARPA, Special Ed funding offset the budget request of $1,561,455? This is referring to Schedule VII in the school budget request, which is towards the end of the presentation document. That, those positions have already been approved either by Department of Elementary, Secondary Education, the State of Mass, or the Select Board for ARPA funding. These, if they were not funded by these sources, they would be part of the supplemental request for the public school's budget. So they're included in the operating request because they've already been approved to be funded with these other.
It looks like Scott Johnson has raised a hand.
Mr. Johnson? Yes, thank you very much. Are you going to give us the answers to these questions that were submitted in writing, in back to us in writing?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. So I don't have to write down all these answers. That's a good idea. I like that. I actually like the idea that you asked for the questions in writing, and then the responses in the future. That's a, that's a great format to have for this meeting, to have the questions submitted in writing, have you guys responded writing, and then have discussion afterwards. I think that's a great, that was a really good idea on your part. It makes it much more organized for everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The next question is, oh, Ada?
Is Emily Cavalier a warrant committee member?
Yes.
Yes.
She is on the call, and I just wanted to be sure that you all knew that she is on. And if there's a need to promote her, or just recognize her.
She's not, she's not on the subcommittee.
Oh, she's not?
No.
Okay, I didn't understand. Thank you.
Okay, the next question is can you justify why the superintendent is getting a 24.8% raise? I'm not going to go into the commentary. I will just answer the question. The increase shown on the salary and wage sheet for the superintendent position is not a wage adjustment. The amount of $180,000 included in the FY '22 budget was erroneously included in that budget based on a 10-month contract for the interim superintendent. If you annualize that and include a 2.5% wage adjustment, that's what you're seeing in the salary and wage sheet. So basically, the short answer, it was submitted in the '22 budget at the wrong rate. I'll set with that. Okay. The next questions relate to the presentation tab. So in the budget book, I put a sheet related to Chromebook requests because when Milton schools went to a capital committee, there was discussion as to whether or not the Chromebooks were properly submitted as a capital request versus an operating request. And I was told that it had to be an operating request at that time, but the school committee had already voted the budget when we were handing out the books that didn't include that. So I put a supplemental schedule in there. And then we were told by the town leadership team that, no, they do belong in capital. So that's where they reside. And they're not part of the operating request. But to answer the questions, details on the 536,550 end-user devices. So this was a capital request submitted by Milton Public Schools Technology Department. The purpose is to replace old outdated Chromebooks for students and desktop PCs or laptops for staff. The request basically includes 1,642 Chromebooks at $270 each for 451,550, plus approximately 100 desktops at $850 each, for $85,000, for a total request of 536,550. Again, that's in the capital request. It's my understanding that the capital recommendation is not fully funding that. They're funding it somewhere around $441,000, which is
That's correct.
short $95,000 in Chromebooks. There's a memo in the school budget under the technology department that has a narrative from our IT director explaining the technology needs for the schools, including the end-user devices, as well as a list of a five-year plan. So that is in the book that was distributed. That, that's all I have for an answer. I'm not, you have. Steve?
Yeah, can I just ask a follow-up question? So 1,624 Chromebooks, you said? Do they just go out to certain age kids, or how did they decide who gets it, gets one or not? Because it's a lot more kids in our school system, right?
Right, so, oh. In that memo, it explains, I don't know if you want to.
In that memo, Stephen, we, we received Chromebooks last year, and we received a few Chromebooks the year before. So these are the ones that are really outdated. And so the ones that were really outdated got pushed down, unfortunately, to our younger students that may not need all of the applications that you might find in your upper grades, your secondary level. So it's a re, those, and unfortunately, that's the downside of technology, even though it's so many benefits for us. After a period of time, the programming, the device itself, the wear and tear becomes outdated. And we were functioning with a number of older Chromebooks.
So would you expect to see an ask for next year again for more Chromebooks?
Yes, it's every year in the five-year plan around approximately the same amount. The $95,000 that's not being funded this year is going to be pushed into next year. I do have some more information because I had a similar question on Susanna's list, which she was asking about, like, who, who has the Chromebooks? And this says Pierce through ninth grade is a one-to-one ratio. And in grades 10 to 12, it's bring your own device. You might have just said this.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, now James just said.
Just, just in summary, we were able, right before the pandemic, the Monday before schools closed on the 13th, we got all of the Chromebooks. We were very fortunate because Pierce did not have them. And we were able to distribute 900 and something Chromebooks to our middle school students. They, even though Milton High School was a one-to-one, I mean, bring your own device. And if you didn't have a device, you could secure one from the school. And we were able to do that. Pierce became the first school within the district that became a one-to-one device that we were able to provide them with, all, all of them with Chromebooks.
Okay.
And to your point, is it going to be a reoccurring cost next year? In some, yes, it's wise to do it that way because otherwise we'd be doing anywhere from 4,000 to 4,500 every few years or so. And it's, it's even more costly at that time in any one given year.
And what was your estimate going forward on a regular basis?
One second. So in year '24 through '27, it's listed as $470,000 a year. But as I stated before, the $95,000 that's not being funded will push into '24 as a request. But with that, I'll also say that Senator Timoltsi's office has reached out to the schools as well as the town to ask if there's any initiatives that aren't being funded for '23 that are one-time, or, you know, wouldn't have to be recurring from a grant standpoint. And he's going to rally on behalf of the town for some of these items. We did submit the $95,000 for Chromebooks to Senator Timoltsi's office. No guarantee that it will get approved. But we are seeking other outside funding whenever possible.
Okay, thank you.
So the next question refers to the one-time request of 589,808 and new curriculum in the math and social studies area. This is a pretty long written response. So I'm going to hand this one over to Superintendent Jet, and maybe he can summarize it, and then you'll get this in, in writing. It's a page and a half.
Right, so in short, the Reader's Digest version of this, the Milton Public Schools haven't, haven't participated in the curriculum review in the elementary levels in almost 20 years, 20 years. In, in the middle and high, I believe it's like eight or nine years. The last time it was Courtney Walsh as the department head for the math department. You could go to Desi's website, you could talk to people in other districts. Research says that you should be reviewing your curriculum every five years. And in this day and age where things are moving and changing so rapidly, three to five years. Now, doing a curriculum review doesn't necessarily mean that you overhaul your curriculum every three to five years. It means that you look at it, review it, and assess, and how do you can make enhancements? Whether supplementary materials and things like that. Where ours was so outdated, that's why it was very important. But again, you will get a very lengthy description in your response on, on the type of math that we're shifting to. And currently, right now, we have a team of teachers at each grade level at the elementary, participating with our director of math, K through 12, looking at the content and reviewing the different curricula that are out there. And so what you get is a proposal for us to start, hopefully either one-time or phasing in, but ideally one-time funds if we could get this. And really, going back to some of the requests of, of the town members, really elevating the rigor and expectation in all of our math programming to make us more, make our students to be more competitive. Go ahead, Member Rosemarin?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think it was our last school committee meeting, we had a wonderful presentation by Brian Selly, the director of mathematics. And he talked about the review of the math curriculum and, and the work that they're doing to get to enhance our curriculum and perhaps select a new one. There is a team working on it with him for the district. And, and you can hear all those details. And it was a very thoughtful presentation and discussion.
And that was on March, Wednesday, March 2nd.
March 2nd, okay.
Can I underscore two points from here, just especially for the people watching? So on the math piece, in terms of the question, what's driving this change for math? There's this Gold Standard Curriculum Review Organization Ed Reports, and they provide objective ratings of different curricula. And our math curricula are rated insufficient. They receive the lowest ratings. So that's a signal that, you know, and we're talking about how can we, you know, enhance excellence for our students? And, you know, it's connected to the questions about our ratings and so forth. You know, we are not going to have a six, the most excellent school district we can if we're using curriculum that's being rated low by the Gold Standard Objective Ratings Organization. So that's on the math side. And on the social studies side, Massachusetts updated its curriculum standards in social studies across K-12 in 2018. And our, and it was a very significant update to the curriculum frameworks and standards. And our curriculum now is out of date and not meeting the standards, which obviously is another sign that, you know, we're behind on that. And so these moves are directly addressing those sort of larger questions that are also themes throughout. And that's in the writing too, but I just know that we have some folks who, you know.
Okay.
She's a teacher or something. We're a teacher, right? Oh, finance. She's the director of finance.
One additional question related to the curriculum was what are the recurring costs for this investment? And there'll be no additional annual recurring costs above those that are already included in the operating budget. We do have a line item for text and materials that are used every year to buy new workbooks and that kind of thing. And any cost related to this would just replace what we're buying now for the old curriculum. And they could increase for inflation, but so would what we currently have in there. So there's no significant additional annual cost related to this.
Okay, thank you.
James, can you also talk about the social studies curriculum review that's going on right now too with that, that team? Could you fill them in on that?
So that's also very similar to the math, is a team of teachers, a couple of teachers per grade level reviewing the curricula. Actually, Kim Kaplan, pot-time social studies director, actually met with us just last week in really honing in on a choice that they're going to be pushing forward. And she will be coming to the school committee and giving a presentation on that as well. And that, we look to have that to be done in the next, one, the next school, well, not the next one, but probably April 6th. And that just builds off of what Dr. Carroll just said to you about the changes in the standard, state standards, and the need for us to pivot. Or incorporate, I should say.
Okay, should I move on to Special Ed?
Yeah.
So Special Ed increased 27.7%. So the question is how much of this is paid to other school systems? And how much do we get paid from other school systems? So the total cost for out-of-district placements is when kids with special education services that the, go to outside schools for the FY '23 is estimated to be approximately $5.6 million. Of this total, $3.4 million is funded in the operating budget. And the remaining 2.2 is funded from what we refer to as the Circuit Breaker Fund. The Circuit Breaker Fund is a state special education reimbursement fund, SSERF. And the purpose of this fund is to provide additional state funding to districts for high-cost special education. So basically, what that means is we submit what we spent in one year, and we get reimbursed a portion of that the following year. That's what that 2.2 represents, is what we expect to get reimbursed this year that would be available for us to offset special education costs next year. So it's like one year, the reimbursement's one year in arrears. There's also a question related to what the increase of the 27.7% relates to. So in the Special Education tab of the budget book, the majority of the increase relates to transportation for $290,000 increase. And out-of-district tuitions increased $200,000, mainly due to an increase in the number of students requiring services, as well as increases in fuel costs that are affecting the transportation cost. And the total of special education enrollment has increased, increased 146 students since the end of the 1920, 2019, 2020 academic year, which includes 31 new students moving in that require services. And the total of out-of-district placements has increased seven students since the 2021 school year. And out-of-district placements can be very expensive. But there's more detail in, in the book. Not sure if that answers everything for that one.
The, the other question I had was in regards to the other way. So we send kids out, we pay for them, but there's also kids that are being sent into our system because we have certain special eds that are, that, that are within our school system. Do we have what that income would be?
There aren't other districts that pay Milton, there?
He could be referring to, you might have Milton residents who might go to like a St. Mary's or private school and may get services like speech or language where they might come here for a period of time. But that's with people that we already have on staff providing those services. So it's not like we're collecting money from those schools. If I'm understanding correctly, but we don't have other students that are moving into our school system that reside in another town or attend another school that, that is giving us money for services.
Thank you.
Remember those, man?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I, I just wanted to add that, that one of the big reasons that, that we're not able to serve some of those out-of-district placements is that we don't have the space to build programs to meet those students' needs. And it's one of the, the things that we're trying to address with the school building project, which Warren Committee has also heard about, that hopefully, when we build our new school, we will have the space to build some of these programs within district, which would really be preferable. It would save the town a lot of money for, for the services for those students and, and open up the possibility of possibly other towns sending their students here. But we can't do that until we have more space.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next question is to please explain the difference between instructional leadership versus instructional services. And for those people that are listening that don't have the budget book in front of them, we break down the budget request by the Department of Elementary, I always say it wrong.
Department of Elementary Secondary Education.
Desi categories that were mandated to report by. And instructional leadership relates to costs related to the delivery of student instructional programs at the school and district level. The majority of these costs relate to the salary and wages of the principals and their administrative assistants at each building, curriculum directors, English language educators, and instructional technology leadership. Versus instructional services are costs related to services provided at the school and district level. And the majority of these costs, costs include salary and wages of the educational assistance, guidance, and adjustment council. of the educational assistance, guidance and adjustment counselors, health services, which are the school nurses, food service and recess monitors, the athletics department, student activity stipends to staff to supervise and run those programs, and transportation costs for regular education students. There's some comments about it being high. But I just want to point out that these are not all administrative management positions because those instructional services are support services for the students. Does that answer that one?
Yeah, I think so. I think getting that in writing would be helpful because it's a lot to absorb.
Okay. The next question is sped non-salary, $578,900. What is this used for? So that is the dollar increase from FY '22 budget to FY '23 budget. If you go to the special education tab in the budget book, there's more detail. It's mainly an increase in required special education services, and we're legally mandated to provide those to the students. Again, there's some schedules in the supplemental schedules of the presentation on special education. Enrollments increased 86 students since the 2021 school year. And there are approximately 50 to 60 students currently being evaluated for services. And then the increase in the non-salary line mainly relates to transportation of the special ed students to out-of-district placements. And a lot of that's driven by more students as well as increased fuel costs.
So you have transportation in two different places in the budget for special ed then?
Correct.
Is there a reason for that?
Yes, he mandated.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll move on. The next one is referring to the priority 1 to 10 staffing needs, which was in the presentation on page 13, I believe. So the question is, will a math interventionist really be hired? Two were approved in the special town meeting and not hired. Where did that money go? We have posted this position numerous times over the past year, but we're having difficulty finding a qualified candidate. We continue to post and try to fill this position because it's extremely important and critical for our students. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I just add to that? If you guys recall that, those were positions that were eventually granted on December 7th at the special town meeting. We advertised for them in the height of the pandemic, prior to any vaccination. We advertised them on the 8th. It was six positions in total. We were able to secure three. The science, the math investigation, the math interventionist, and the world language teacher at the middle school. We could not hire at the time. And I do recall going before the warrant committee and asking to keep these on the books because we were going to be going to the Mass Partnership for Diversity Education Job Fair in late March. But it was actually, so where did the money go? We just never got the money for those positions. It's not that people took it away. We just never got it because the assumption was, because we didn't fill it very early on, we didn't need it. But I've explained a couple of times, we were able to get by for the science position because Ben Kelly, the vice principal at the high school, taught a science class. Carol Yefru, the science teacher, taught an extra science class, and Amy Tom did it. We were able to get by without Spanish at the time because from September 16th all the way to April 12th, we were in the hybrid model every other day. So it split the class sizes in half. That allowed us to sustain at least for the end of the year. And then when we came back full-time, we still had a number of students who stayed remote for the remainder of the year. That was a state allowance in terms of affording people to have a smooth transition. And then the math interventionist, we just didn't have that support supplied to our students. But it wasn't for a lack of trying. It was very, there was a critical shortage, not only in the town of Milton, but throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I just wanted to put that in the right context.
Okay.
And if I could just follow up, when I said we continued to try to fill that position, I was referring to the one that's being funded with the SRF funds.
Right.
So we didn't get it. It was taken away from the operating budget. We submitted one under the SRF III grant.
And if I could close on that, we did a presentation on December 15th about our student data, which revealed that there's a desperate need to kind of backfill and support our students in the area of mathematics to try to get them up to at least grade level or exceeding grade level. Unfortunately, we had a number of students that fell either two or three grade levels behind. It was tough. Last year was a tough year. In the year before, we ended on a tough year, if you guys remember, closing 2020, March 13th for the remainder of that year.
Towards the back of the presentation in the book is the, we started the meeting today with the question about districts we compare ourselves to. So just on this particular question, you know, as you look at this page 27, it points out that, you know, we have zero math interventionists, but our peer districts have, you know, three, four, five, six, seven, nine of that position. So if we're comparing ourselves to these other districts, we should be consistent with how we're doing that.
There's also in the supplemental schedules of the presentation, there's some data related to scores for our students that indicate the need for this type of position. Those are like on page 25, 24, 25, 26. We all set to move on or?
I'm okay, thank you.
The next one, I'm going to answer a small part of it, and then I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Jeff. What impact to class size or quality of education if we do not recommend 17 new staff members? I'm assuming that this question is referring to the top 17 items in the supplemental budget requests?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so 11 of those 17 items in that listing relate to support positions, not classroom teachers, specialists such as reading and math specialists, adjustment counselors, kindergarten and recess aides, increasing the length of their day to make sure we have adequate coverage in the classroom, part-time nursing support, and a special education team chair and pre-K coordinator. So those would not affect the class size, but could affect the students' progress with unfinished learning. And the remaining six are classroom teachers, but I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Jeff to answer the quality of education piece.
So without question, as the numbers, the enrollment goes up, that's less individualized attention given to the individual students. That could be increased distractions, behavioral issues because you have a class size that is extremely high. But to reiterate, some of those positions are not added positions. They're just extending the day. And it's for safety, safety reason. When you, when you have kindergarten aides or recess aides going out and you have a ratio of 1 to 60 elementary students, that is a safety concern. And we've been very blessed that we've been able to manage without incident. But that is something that is desperately needed to make sure that the safety is there. And then going back to the data that we refer to, some of which is in your book. But if you ever wanted to tune into some of the data more specifically, again, the school committee on December 15th. And then again, I believe it was January 3rd, if I'm not mistaken, 3rd, or first Wednesday of January, as a follow-up to that data, you would see that some of our core academic content areas have declined in our student performance. Once again, I want to remind folks that on this call, it's not isolated to the town of Milton. There was a decline statewide in that. And we're trying to make sure that we support our students, but even more so. And I think Member Rosemarin said this several times, even prior to the pandemic, there was a concern about our students meeting or exceeding grade level in ELA by third grade. Research shows if students are behind by third grade, it's always a catch-up game. And so our job is to really try to backfill and support students and do so by having manageable class sizes within the Milton public schools.
Any questions on that?
I will add one more. Oh, sorry, you've got a rosemary. As the class sizes go up, remember, we're also squeezing the inside classroom space as well. And we've been making some conversion to some of our various spaces within the Milton public schools. And if you haven't seen the video that's been circulating around, I encourage you to look at that. That's some of the challenges that we have as well.
Yeah, we started at our last meeting.
Ada?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add in, in relation to the unfinished learning that we've been seeing from the impact of the pandemic, we've also had a number of presentations at school committee meetings by principals and site councils reporting on data that has been gathered through the formative assessments that the district is now using, particularly for English Language Arts and, and math, and showing where students were at the beginning of the year and the progress that they've made just to mid-year data collection. It was really heartening to see the growth that is being accomplished by having students back in school full-time with a staff that's working hard to address the needs.
And if I could just close on this, that is very important for learning loss or accelerating learning. But I do want to emphasize, these are positions that are needed beyond the pandemic. And I think that that is important to know. I think some, I believe it was last year, the warrant committee, people said, why are you asking for something that you've already asked before? Because we've been putting these on the list, some of these positions on the list for multiple years, even before the pandemic. They just haven't been funded. So the need hasn't gone away.
Yep.
It's just been exacerbated by the pandemic. So for those who are on the call, it may not have been privy to some of these meetings and discussions. I just wanted to make sure that that, that point was elevated.
Okay, to move on?
Yep.
Okay, so the next question is, how does our percentage of special education budget compare to other equivalent towns? I believe that's referring to the fact that special education in Milton is about 27.7% of the total school budget. So what I did was, I went to the DESI website, and I pulled out some of the towns that we compare ourselves to. In this document, I inserted a table into it that shows pretty much the same town that are in the slide that has the per pupil expenditure. The data is from the fiscal '20 school year, because '21 and '22 aren't available yet. And at that time, Milton's special education was about 23% of the overall budget. And we were pretty much in the ballpark of other towns. There were a lot of towns at 23, 22, 24%. The outliers were Lexington at 28%, Canton at 28%, Rain Tree at 27%, Brookline, Hingham, Natick, Needham, Sharon, Stoughton, Milton, Winchester, All Around, 23, 24%. Needham was the lowest, at 22%. The state average, all districts, 23%. So we were at the state average.
Okay, thank you.
And the last question on this list is, what is the $70,000 for principal tech equipment for? This primarily relates to the copier leases at each of the various school buildings. So, and related supplies for those copiers.
I'm sorry?
Copiers on leave, copiers, printers.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the first list.
Yep.
The next list I have, I believe, may have been Susanna's.
Yep.
And the first question relates to the curriculum, which we've already covered. The second question relates to the personnel detail. And it says, there seems to be several places in the personnel budget referencing CO-TO. For instance, two grade five teacher positions at Glover are being eliminated and replaced with one grade five English teacher and another grade five CO-TO. What exactly does CO-TO entail? And why was this decision to make this change? So I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Jeff, but I just want to. The next question is, why the elimination of a kindergarten teacher at Colacott and a first grade teacher at Tucker? And my portion of the answer is going to address both of those. As students matriculate from one grade to another, or students move into town, the needs at the different grade levels in schools may change. And it's not necessarily that we eliminated a kindergarten position. The total kindergarten classes are the same. It's that that kindergarten class may have shifted for space reasons or location reasons to one of the other schools. But then I'm going to throw it to you.
So in terms of the CO-TO, just so you guys know, in the educational terms, it's a general ed teacher and a special education teacher. This is a push to elevate the overall achievement of our students that are identified as being on the IEP, Individualized Educational Plan, that may have a cognitive or some sort of learning or physical disability that prevents. But the goal is to expose them to the college prep curriculum and provide them with the support that's needed within the, within the class. Years ago, there were a lot of sub-separate class. And unfortunately, if they were potentially sub-separate class, people may have assumed that the level of rigor may have been dropped a little bit. This is exposing students to the regular, the general ed curriculum, high expectations for all students, for scaffolding and the necessary supports, the staffing support to support those students within that classroom. However, sometimes those special education teachers might have a class outside of a CO-TO room that provides additional support for those students as well, as you matriculate up through the grades, particularly in the secondary level. So that's why you might see that same number of special education teachers, but they might not be doing bulk or 100% pullout. They may be in the general ed class supporting the students with the curriculum.
I'd like to point one other thing out in the budget summary portion of the book. If you go maybe 14, page 19, there's an overall summary in there that shows headcount changes district-wide as opposed to the detail shows it by school. And I just want to point out that policy and administration, instruction and leadership, and instruction, well, policy and admin, instruction and leadership did not increase at all. The headcount remained the same. Instruction went up 0.5 full-time equivalents. That's a Spanish teacher at, it's a half-time Spanish teacher at the middle school level to address class size. And then instructional services in regular education went down 1.8 positions. And then the majority of the increase was in special education. That went up 7.6 positions for a net of 6.3 overall. Special education increases are mandated, legal mandate. So they're considered part of the rollover budget.
Next page.
Were we good with that?
Yep.
So the next question is, what is the $5,000 for online courses, distance learning for? Obviously, a small expenditure, but I thought distance learning had ended. I think there's some confusion there with the assumption that this relates to the remote learning due to the pandemic that has ended. What this really is, cost that you pay to a third-party vendor for online courses for students who can't attend school in person for a significant period of time, for example, due to a medical reason or hospitalization. And there's also some cost. And there's also some costs included in, in that budget line item for credit recovery courses for students who are in failing a class, basically.
Yes, and it, it seems like a very small amount, but it's a very significant benefit to keep students connected to the curriculum, to keep them on pace with their peers. It adds an additional burden if someone is going through some sort of trial tribulation, whether it's medical, cancer, physical disability, mental health disability. But keeping them in line with their peers, I think is, I, I think that's a small number when you put that in, in perspective of how far a person could be set back if they didn't have access to that. And that is something that has been done for years. Unfortunately, it's not isolated to Milton. We have students that are either injured, medical issues, they may not be here. Sometimes it could be weeks, sometimes it could be months.
Okay, the next question is, what is behind the 20% increase in transportation fees related to athletics? This $20,000 equates to $19,000, and that mainly relates to the athletic transportation costs. The minimum cost per trip charged by our bus vendor has increased from $250 a trip to $320 a trip. And that's mainly due to increases in fuel costs, driver costs because of funding, yeah, inflation, hiring. There's a shortage on drivers, so they increase pay.
Do we want to talk about those fans on there?
The next question is, how are we collecting only 47% of fees for bus riders? Does the uncollected percentage include those from home who are mandated to provide bus fees? Or are 53% of the students who should be paying not paying? That 47% relates to the fact that we are legally mandated to transport all students in grades kindergarten through grade six that live two or more miles from their home to their assigned school free of charge. Any students above that grade are charged the fee, except if they qualify for free or reduced lunch. So that is not, we do not have riders that are supposed to pay, that haven't paid, that are allowed to ride. They are, lose their privileges if they don't pay the fee. The next question relates to Chromebooks, so I think we answered that already.
Let me take the next one.
Yeah, do you want to read it? Or do you want me to?
It doesn't matter. Why is the heating 40% more expensive than it was in FY '20? I understand it was lower in FY '20 because kids weren't in school. But in the years before, it was also much lower than it is now. What are the mitigating strategies that we use and needed to use? And this was the recommendation by DPH, DESI, and also CDC in terms of increasing the number of fresh air exchanges. We reported this out in my blog. It's one of the mitigating strategies that we've done it on all of our meetings. When we give an update, leaving the windows open, crack in the winter to circulate fresh air. When we came back to full in-person learning, along with the rooftop units to circulate the air in the classroom, because at the time, we were concerned about the eardroplets with COVID. But we have since learned a lot about it. Things have gotten a little bit better. But that's what we needed to do to get students back in school and hopefully in a safe environment. So in that, coupled with the increase in energy costs, is a contributing factor to that.
Okay, I'm going to let you take the next one.
I'm sorry.
About high school classes.
Okay.
About the hybrids.
Oh, yeah. Please provide a, a list of MHS high school classes, which are hybrid classes taught as a mix of honors and college prep students. What would the cost be of retaining enough teachers to prevent these mixed classes? Why was it not a budget request or priority for the school committee? The hybrid classes at Milton High School are world language classes, chorus, band, strings, studio art, and visual literacy. For world language, we anticipate we would need to hire at least five teachers for approximately a total cost of 375, and we spread them out. Sometimes you might have various students, particularly matriculating through the grades at the middle school. They take a high school world language and they might try to double up, or they might do a little bit better. So sometimes an AP class might be mixed with honors students and they just get credit. Or vice versa, honors in college prep, if someone wants to stretch themselves. Currently, the world language teachers differentiate the instruction needed for each group. I just talked a little bit about that in the classroom, which allows more flexibility to move from one level to another level without a drastic scheduling change. And so those are some of the challenges we have. Again, trying to be very strategic in using it to our advantage without, not that it doesn't matter. In the ideal situation, we would love to have the teachers, but when we're capable of making or, or supporting students in that way, we do that. It's when it's a challenge is when we're coming forward and asking for that support.
Okay.
All set there? So the last question on this list is, where in the budget is the newly hired restorative justice coach? Restorative justice coach? What is the salary benefit cost of that position? And are there other costs associated with the school committee's adoption of its restorative justice model? Training costs, materials, anything? So the restorative justice coach is being funded in FY '22 and '23 from the Special Education 94-242 Special Education Grant. This relates to the disproportionality in identifying students as communication disorder. We intend, we anticipate this disproportionality will not be completely resolved in FY '23. And the need to fund this position via the grant will continue beyond '23. Money in the grant is also set aside for materials and professional development associated with this role. If you look at, back to the budget presentation, the second to the last page, page 29, you see the restorative justice coach in there. It's approximately $75,000 a year when we submitted to the grant. This page is just the positions. There's also part of that grant funds some of these other costs that are just not listed on this page.
And if I could just close that section or list, there's questions about it. The disproportionality identification is from the Department of Elementary-Secondary Education. It was bestowed upon us this past year. So I, I don't want people to think that it's something that we're just electing to do, even though we believe it's a quality initiative to support our students, but it was a, it was a label that was bestowed upon us by DESI.
So those are the two lists that we, that I received yesterday. I understand there's another set of questions from another member. I'm just going to pull out the two that are budget-related. And that's the one regarding the superintendent's salary, which we already answered, the increase. And there was also a similar question related to the payroll clerk. The question was, the payroll clerk is getting nearly a 10% raise this year. Please explain why. She's not getting a 10% raise. When the budget for fiscal year '22 was submitted, the former superintendent of business knew that the payroll clerk that was in that position at that time had the intention of retiring, and she had been a longstanding employee. He submitted what he felt would be the estimate for the salary for that position. When they interviewed and subsequently hired that position, the salary came in more than was budgeted. So it looks like she's getting a 10% raise, but she's not. It's just that the budget in FY '22 was on the low side compared to where the person was hired, the level the person was hired. Those, I think those are the financial questions and move it in there.
So I share that I did not forward your questions to Superintendent Dexter or Superintendent Jeff or the committee members. That was an oversight of mine. I thought I did, and then I when I was here earlier, that Amy had not received them. So she did look at them and, and I am, we are prepared to talk a little bit about the strategic plan. And I know Superintendent Jeff spoke to you a little bit about the strategic plan in a prior phone call that you had with him. But if you'd like to hear a little bit more about it, we can talk about that for a few more minutes. It's right now 6:53. I would like to maybe hope that we could finish up by seven. So James, if you wanted to talk a little bit about the strategic plan, where it's at and, and that kind of thing.
So yes, thank you for the opportunity. And Mr. Johnson requested a copy of the strategic plan, which I forwarded to him. It's been advertised and posted on the website for years. Under the leadership of school committee member Ada Rosemary, Milton Public Schools faculty and staff and involving parents. That was an evergreen strategic plan. It's been ongoing. What we should be doing is progress monitoring, evaluating, and reassessing. When you look at that initial plan, it was a very robust, I could, you use that term, robust strategic plan. Given all that we went through, there was a consensus amongst those who worked on the former strategic plan and those who are on the current leadership team to say, how do we centralize, focus, narrow down our focus, drill down and focus on three current areas? And I shared with Mr. Johnson in the phone call that I have with him that that strategic plan was being developed. The one that he was given was from 2017. It expires at the end of this academic year, 2022. And the one that we are currently working on is really narrowing down to three focus areas. And, and that is personalized learning to focus on academic outcome and excellence and increasing rigor for all of our students. It's focused on safe and supportive schools, the SEL component. A lot of people have said it over the course of the last two years, the social, emotional, the mental health of our students. And we recognize that, and we're trying to scaffold in supports to identify and support that through our Intellicbox survey and the services that we are advocating to provide for our students. And the third pillar is equity. And equity, I want to emphasize, equity is providing access to programming top-notch classes for all of our students. And given all of our students, even some of our students that have historically been modularized, affording them the opportunity to excel, reach their potential, and hopefully expand upon that. So that is the, the current strategic plan. To your point, Mr. Johnson, it has benchmarks, it has professional development linked to it. That's what we're fine-tuning right now, and we're very close to being able to present that to the school committee for a vote. We tentatively, we're going to do that this, this coming Wednesday. But that's on the agenda moving forward. They bring that to the school committee for a vote. Member Rosemary, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add, but that's basically where we are, Mr. Johnson. And as you know, over the course of the last year, even though I was here in the Milton Public Schools, I was not on that previous team, even though we were contributors to that. Now we're narrowing that down, and we have a more intentional focus and a more refined focus in my comments. I do want to thank all of those people that worked on that previous strategic plan to get us where we are today, and those who are working on the new one. Remember Rosemary?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Jeff. I, I think you described the progress that we've made with our strategic plan over these last five years well. And I think the, the efforts of our leadership team to develop this new plan are outstanding, and, and I'm excited to bring that forward to the school committee at our meeting on April 6th and hope that we'll be able to take a vote to put that into action going forward. But in the, in the entire plan will be available publicly at that point.
Amy had one more thing she wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention because special education is one of the areas of the '23 budget that is increasing significantly over 2022. I just wanted to mention that Susan Missalia, the Director of Pupil Personnel, is presenting to the school committee on Thursday evening related to special education. That will be recorded, correct?
Yeah.
So if you can't tune in then, it'd be an interesting thing to watch because she can explain much better than any of us in this room. Just wanted to put that out there as an additional resource that might be useful.
Okay. All right. Well, I want to take this moment to thank everybody for coming and for people who are listening in, to thank them for their time to listen in through the budget discussions. And I'd like to offer a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Okay. Before that vote, I'd like to ask a question, if I may.
Okay.
Yeah, can please, I request that all of my, my questions are budget-related because budget is always determined by objectives. So I would appreciate you answer all of my questions in writing, along with the other ones too, please. And, and I, I know it's a lot, it's a little bit of work, but we work to do it. We're, our goal again, as I'm going to state again, is to make this a top school district. And I think that the objective of the schools, and I'm sure you guys agree with this, is to make our kids have the best lives possible, productively, socially, familiably. And what I'd like to see is goals with benchmarks, and we can actually ensure the success. And that's the way we'll climb to the top. That's the way it's done in the private sector. That's how companies rise to be great. And I don't see any reason why we can't learn from that model as educators to do the same rigorous work as, as, as has been proven to work in the marketplace, in the real world. So I'm just asking you, please answer those questions and think about it. And again, I think that nothing is more valuable, child, than learning the skill of strategic life planning in writing in the long run, where their dreams, they're taught how to take their dreams and formulate those into a strategic plan with benchmarks, goals. So that when they do graduate, they really, they've been thinking about this subject for a long time. And they can then have this skill that follows them through their life. And that is a great equalizer for everybody, anybody with those skills. We know that less than 2% of people in this ever write down strategic plans. But those 2% control 90% of everything. And 90% of what's written down is accomplished. So that, that's what, that's what my intent is here. It's not to put anybody on the spot. My intent is to do something proactive in these schools, maybe something different than just the state mandates.
I have to interrupt you because we've got to finish up.
Betty, can, I don't know if Bev is going to speak to this.
Hang on a second.
If she's not, I want to.
Hold on one second. I want to, there's two more people who would like to speak, and then we have to adjourn the meeting. Because other, we have other meetings we have to attend to tonight, and I don't want to be late for my other commitments and other people's commitments. Okay, Beverly, can you hear me? You can speak.
Good evening, and I want to thank everyone who thoughtfully put together their questions. And I want to thank the members that are in that room and were of the school committee and of the administration who adeptly responded to the questions. I, last week or the last few weeks, we've been meeting with the Joint Select Board Committee about the town's finances and their projections for town revenue. And based on that last meeting, there is, like with the district, a structural deficit. There is not enough funding for the rollover budget. In the private sector, where I started my career, if you're an entrepreneur, or if your company is, is planning on investing in a new invention, you can go to the capital markets, you can go to venture capitalists, you can go to private equity firms. But there's a way to raise capital to fund your goal. Unfortunately, in public education, especially in Milton, we don't have that latitude, right? Right now, we're hoping that we can just ask for an override in an out year, in the hopes that that would just cover a rollover. So I would love to challenge our town, that includes the select board, the warrant committee, the planning board, to now say, if we want this highly-ranked if we want this highly ranked competitive district, we have to fund like we can afford this highly competitive, well-ranked district. Right now, most of the things that are on the list, the select board is saying we may not be able to afford even with the federal aid. So I would love to hear any reflections or any recommendations that the warrant committee has, once they get all the responses in writing. We want to know, now that you have the information you requested, you've seen the data about our academic performance and the Herculean efforts our staff have made on a limited budget. How do we plan on bringing in the money to do the work that you so adequately recommended?
I can definitely go with that and.
Didn't recognize you, Mr. Johnson. Ada?
I'm sorry.
Um, yes, I just, I, I concur with, with, uh, member Russ Denny's comments. And I just want to add, um, to respond to, um, Mr. Johnson's comments about our, our strategic plan and, and the planning for success. And I, I again urge you to, um, watch our school committee meeting on, on April 6th, where the strategic plan, the new strategic plan will be presented because one of the three primary goals is personalized learning. And that means to help students reach the, the heights of their, of their success and to be involved in evaluating their own growth and, and how to move that forward to reach their goals. And, um, I, I couldn't agree more with, with the need for that for all of our students. And, um, and likewise, our, our equity goal will address that. And our safe and supportive schools goal will, will all three be pillars for building the type of schools that we aspire to be.
Okay, thanks Ada. And, and Lizzie, you wanted to speak?
This is just a final piece of information in response to Mr. Johnson's question regarding goals and metrics. Um, so in addition to the strategic plan, uh, which as you've just heard will be presented very soon, um, the school committee and the superintendent do engage in an annual process of goal setting. Uh, that's a conversation that starts at the summer retreat. And then we engaged in that discussion over a series of public meetings in September and October of this past year. And as a result of that, um, the superintendent and the school committee set a series of goals uh, that included targets, metrics, benchmarks, um, in some cases set out over the next three years. Um, and we are preparing to, to do, um, a mid, uh, mid-year
Mid-cycle.
Conversation about the superintendent's evaluation, which is in relation to the superintendent's goals. We also will be doing checking in on the school committee's goals. And we will have a more full conversation as the school year wraps up. How did we do against these goals? I will say that the goals we set for this current year, um, were different than goals set in previous years. They're smart goals that they actually have, um, targets attached to them. And so if that's an area of interest for you, I think that would be probably a good, um, document to look at and to follow. It's in, it's.
It's in your budget, it's in your budget books.
So that, that's separate, but connected to the strategic plan.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, I'll recognize you very briefly because we have to adjourn.
Yeah, um, the other thing, in addition to setting goals for new expenditures, I'm also curious, um, when there's ever been a real review and restructuring of the schools? That's another thing that you should take into, that there could be cost savings, uh, in looking at that aspect of it too, not just the expansiveness of the budget, but the, uh, trimming of the, uh, I don't want to say fat, but just to, to restructure, to look at, are we really being efficient? Are we getting our bang for our buck here?
Okay, thank you very much. We have to adjourn. Um.
You're welcome.
All right.
I, I moved.
Seconded, Lizzie?
Yeah.
We don't.
Nope.
No, me, all right, Ada, sorry, I'm a little. Ada, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We get to vote too.
Oh, sorry, so, so, yes, we're, we're adjourned. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.